And even before we do the minutes, while it's fresh, I would like us to work on the ratification resolution. I thought there might still be people here. I'll just give you a copy if you wanted to read with me. Who might still be here, but nonetheless, it's first on our agenda, so I thought we would do it. So I'm gonna read the resolution, and then I will entertain a motion from one of my fellow board members about passing.
And you'll send this to me?
Yes. Resolution of the Town of Rawlinsford, New Hampshire Select Board. The Select Board of the Town of Rawlinsford, New Hampshire, pursuant to Chapter 20, House Bill 329 of the 2017 Legislative Session, hereby legalizes, ratifies, and confirms all actions, votes, and proceedings held at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, which was postponed due to a weather emergency. This action is taken after a properly noticed public hearing, said notice having been published in the Foster's Daily Democrat and having been posted on the town's website 72 hours prior to this action. A true attested copy of this resolution will be posted at the place of the annual town meeting. We'd like copies to be posted at the Rawlinsford Town Hall, the Rawlinsford Post Office, and on the town's website, with the original to be delivered to the town clerk. Given under our hands on this date, May 8. We probably don't need a motion, actually. So we have, looks like we are signing it. We need to sign four, so. We could make copies, but it's also... Thank you very much. I'm gonna make a note about something we need to sign later, copy. And this was actually the resolution that had been recommended to us by our bond council. Our first resolution that we wrote ourselves did have a a note of appreciation to the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which helped guide us in making our decision. And we wanted to make that public, that we have full faith, confidence in the municipal association. They do an amazing job in helping our Select Board and the entire municipality. I don't know if there's anything else that I want to say. Okay, we will continue with our meeting. Approval of minutes. We have last, not May 8.
May 1st.
May 1st. There we go. I've now changed my agenda to say May 1st. So we have the minutes of May 1st, a regular board meeting. And let's do that separately, and we'll talk about the grievance hearing minutes at a separate thing. How does the board feel about the minutes of May 1st? Everybody's on by consensus. The grievance, I did, I did read them. I see that they had the entire grievance as part of it, and then a very short write-up of the grievance itself, which I was actually very fond of it. So I'm, I'm good with those. Any comments from? All right, so by consensus, the grievance hearing minutes are also approved. Thank you. Community input. Charlie?
Yes, is the Select Board aware that there's only two people working at the transfer station at present?
Yes, the Select Board is aware. Thank you. Okay. Transfer station? How is it that you do not know that? And you do not know that?
I know that.
No, he knows that.
Do we not? Has there been no official action? Is that? Then maybe we should wait for Jeff to have the official. Possibly, yes. Okay. Let's go on to Department Head Business. Building Inspector Code Enforcement activity on Church and Washington. I haven't heard any more about that. That was the construction.
I went up there. There's a hallway trailer there for sure, but it's full of household waste and furniture. Someone had moved up.
Not really construction.
It's not, there's no construction debris yet in there. I'm saying there won't be, but.
Well, I think, I think we did ask Tom to go look at it. So I don't know, did, I don't know that he heard back from. I haven't heard. Of 79 Rawlins Road. So you asked us to put that?
Yes, I asked Tom to go look at paving this week. 77 and 79 were paving the same day. Apparently, we have building permit tonight. No, 30-something was paving at 79 on the same day. And I guess we have building permit for 37, I believe.
All right, so one of them had a permit.
Yeah, but he didn't respond about 79. So I'll email him about 79.
Perfect. No, that's fine.
And I can't find anywhere in the minutes that there was a building permit for 79. Yes, 79.
Okay. So you will email him?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To Tom Clark.
Okay. The ordinance on housing standards. So Michael, thank you for getting all of that together. I did start looking at it. I, I'm not sure, just based on some of the questions or concerns I have and the fact that I'm gonna be away for a while, that we might, that we would be ready for the tentative public hearing. It was the first Monday that I'm back. Yeah, well, I, I tell you, the first thing that, that I have a question about is the grandfathering clause.
I take no pride in ownership. I didn't write it.
No, I understand. So I have, I just have questions, and I think the process of trying to.
Share the similar concerns.
Yes, to get answers may take us a while. Yes, it was exactly it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, but. So, so I think it may take us a while to work with things.
Did we have it on to the 20th?
I think it was probably June. Yeah, June, maybe.
12?
Yeah.
Yes, 12, so we'll get back to.
Maybe until we think we're ready, rather than giving it a date. Does that work?
Let's just take it off then.
Okay. So we're, we're not going to have, we didn't notice it, but we're not gonna have a public hearing on the 12th of June. And the other thing I thought I'd suggest is, you know, going through it, there are a lot of the references to a chapter from the Dover. So I wouldn't mind going through and getting rid of those things and just changing.
Is yours to refer? I think it might be referencing back to a chapter at the beginning of the section, which references the RSA. Like Chapter 20 or something. Or 2 or something. I know what you're talking about, so.
It looked like, it looked like chapter headings of the, I mean, this is an ordinance. It's not a, it's an ordinance. Right, but, but it's going to be our ordinance. It starts with.
We need to remember it, too. I didn't do that at all.
Yes. So I thought I would just go through and make those kinds of changes. And then we could just deal with the substance as much as possible.
I couldn't remember, I didn't know where. It's a question, it's a question of our current ordinance as it would fall.
Yes, I don't know that either, but we'll, we'll figure it out when we get closer. Okay. So that's the housing ordinance. Health Inspector, South Street Dumpster. Does anybody know anymore?
It's been cleaned out.
Oh, okay, so can we take it from our list then? Okay. I don't see the fire here to talk about the break. I put it there so we don't forget to ask him. Do you know anymore about that?
I sent you the email that was forwarded to the Rec Committee, and I just want to make sure it's okay with Chief, that it stays accurate.
Okay. All right, Highway. Farm on Sligo Road. Caroline did, you know, we asked her last week to draft a letter. I don't know where it is, is this it? And she did draft a letter. Board, did you have a chance to read it?
I did. My only concern is that they were using ropes to have cattle cross the street, but they didn't have any flaggers with the ropes from what you were saying.
There's an RSA preventing anything. You're not supposed to block a public way in any way, shape, or form. You're not supposed to put anything across the road.
Are you thinking that? So Jody, are you thinking that it would have been okay if there had been flaggers, is that?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how they're gonna get their cattle across the road. Chief? Is there, is there an RSA that says that?
Well, state law prohibits anyone from directing traffic in any manner unless you're certified by a police officer. You know, you see it all the time, moving trucks backing up on the roadway, the help stops traffic for a second. So there, you know, within reason, there are some exceptions. And I can, I know Jeff and I have spoken about this issue, about putting that rope across, slider rope. The concern is, you know, someone coming down around the corner rather quickly, not knowing there's rope across there, especially if they're on a motorcycle or whatever, there's gonna be some serious injury there, so. Especially without any, any warning sign indicating that there is a rope across the roadway, or someone standing there with a little red flag waving or something like that.
My only concern is, like, okay, fine, so.
Right, they have to get the cows across the road. Yeah.
No, no pun intended.
Yeah.
So, so.
Couple people can stand in a road like some people do, some other farmers do.
So can we, we can ask. Well, once again, we're back to technically, we're not supposed to do that.
But it's safer than putting a rope across the road.
Oh, no, I totally agree with you.
And tying it off to the farm.
I would much rather have their staff.
Perhaps we can ask Caroline to informally talk to them about, and give them that suggestion.
Right, I don't, I don't want to hinder their business, because it's like, oh, they, they, the cows need to eat. So, we live in Rawlins.
Agreed.
Do you? The letter itself is, is, is fine, but I think a conversation with them should be had, either.
Would they be willing to purchase a couple of cattle crossing signs as well, maybe?
Well, that's a great idea.
We'll have Caroline chat with them. Does that, does that work?
Because of course you have horse, horse stables that have horse crossings, and there's places where we always cross the horses and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we are a rural community, at least in parts.
Are the farm signs still up on Sligo Road? Just like the, they were yellowish, you know, the yellowish-green warning signs, you know, they were triangle.
Yellow and purple.
And we used to have signs up there that said that?
I don't think so. I don't recall seeing them.
Andy had a sign.
Okay, it's over by, it's over by the Al's, then.
All right, so are we okay with my signing this letter? Okay, and I've got a note to have Caroline check in with them. Okay, so that's done. We have a right-of-way on Locust Street.
Yeah, we're looking to find that.
I think it's 462 Locust Street. There's a resident that's not happy that we're putting snow in his doyad. So what he wants to do is actually put a fence up. And he wants to know where he can put the fence. Before I can tell him anything, I need to know where our property lines are as a, as a town. I'm supposed to meet up with him Friday. I suggest it be Caroline reaching out to Hoyle and Tanner. There's a, there's a lady that works for them that, that kind of, she's specifically, that's what she does for a job, is looks up.
The easement?
Easements and rightways and.
Right, I don't know. Right, I think she knows how to handle rights of way if, once they're known. We, the problem for us is, we don't know what the right way is definitively in any particular spot. That's the problem.
So, but to back up, just for another sort of part of the process in order. The resident also needs to know they need to come get a building permit for the fence. And we, it's true that we don't charge, we don't charge for fences, but we certainly, my first year with them, we, we were several people that came in to get building permits for fences. There was not a fee associated with it, even an administrative fee. But we wanted to make sure that people, our practice had been to make sure that people understood there had to be certain fee, and if it was a, I don't know, a chain-linked fence, it had to be facing a certain way, or any kind of fence, you know, the stockade fence, the, what I guess would be commonly called the nicer-looking sign. I don't know how to determine that, to be honest, but would be facing out, you know. So that's why we hadn't.
So this particular resident, the house?
Well, could, I'm sorry, we'll get back, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of what Michael was saying. So, I mean, if people ask me, I would say they don't have to fill out a building permit for a fence, because.
We haven't done.
And if I came in when we put up our fence, and they said, no, you don't need anything, just make it look nice on the outside.
James has made people fill them out, so I don't know. I'm not saying this practice was consistent.
I mean, if there's no ordinance that require, if that's one of the things that's specifically, like, not mentioned. I mean, not that we shouldn't or couldn't at some point, but right now fences are not part of the.
That we don't charge for, I understand that. But if we want to make sure it's put, it's erected correctly.
But it has to say, we have to tell them that they have to come in for that. Right now there's.
Doesn't specifically, on the building permit, it doesn't specifically say they don't have to come in for one?
Well, I don't know. See, that, that's been my understanding. So maybe we're wrong. If you can find something that would clear it up, that would be excellent. All right, so anyway, so the first, it would be nice to know what the right-of-way is. You can um, how, I mean, you can make it. What is the average right-of-way on some of these roads of that same ilk? Do we know?
Forty foot, thirty foot. It varies throughout the road, yeah, throughout town.
Well, the best that we, you know, the, the most judicious would be to, to take the.
I want to say Locust Street's only a 20-foot road wide, so I'm gonna say it's 20-foot right-of-way, so you get 10 feet off the edge of the road. But this individ, this, this, this individual, the house address is on Locust Street. His driveway is on Stevens Court.
But the fence is going on both?
It's going on the corner of Locust and Stevens Court.
So just a corner fence, like the, across the street here?
That's, that's what I gathered. I'm actually supposed to meet up with him Friday. Thursday or Friday this week, actually.
Do we have any guidance that we can? You can see this is our favorite topic, as it is yours.
Yeah, I mean, I can't force nothing, nobody can. When nobody knows.
Nobody knows. What have we been using for Prospect? What have we used from Prospect?
I thought it was 30 feet. Where Hoyle Towns say 40.
It varies 40 to 50 foot, all the way up through.
Forty to 50?
On Prospect? How would they know Prospect?
Not Prospect, that's Powne, excuse me. Yeah, we haven't done nothing on Prospect Street.
I would say choose one that's not, that we can defend. Although then I don't have any advice.
State roads are 50 foot.
All right, Mr. Brunel was in earlier and spoke to me about Prospect Street. So he thought he was grandfathered. He thinks that at some point, the right-of-way was 13 feet, and that therefore his columns are part of that. He, he said that the police, I'm glad you're here. He said that the police sort of corroborated his story, that it was done by the plow.
The report does not say that. Your report says a brick had been fallen off or knocked out.
I actually gave the board a copy of the police report.
All right.
I'm gonna say, I saw the report, it didn't say anything about. And I measured the wing on the truck that Plows died rode.
28 inches.
And the other two, and none of them. We're gonna do it, so. Plus on that, one particular piece of Prospect Street, magically, the wing of the plow increased by a good 12 inches. It didn't happen by that plow.
We'll write another letter. He'll come back.
It's fine, we can talk about it in a public meeting then, and not have him come in before the meeting. He needs to come in and discuss it, like every other resident wants to.
All right, we'll make a note on it, stay the next time. Okay. You're on.
I just have a couple purchase orders. Purchase order 1199 for Pike Industries for 7913 for cold patch.
Purchase order number 1199 to Pike Industries for cold patch for $79 and 13.
Second.
Any discussion, all those that there to say aye?
Aye. Purchase order 1198 to Pike Industries for cold patch for 14111.
Purchase order 1189 to Pike for cold patch for $141 and 11 cents.
I have a question.
I do, too.
So why do we have two separate purchase orders?
Because that went two separate times.
They're dated the same day?
Two separate bills.
Yeah, they're dated today, but it looks like they're in two different invoices.
There's two different invoices. One was like a half a ton, and the other one was for like 1.7 ton.
Second question, why, why are we using cold patch in the summer?
Because we put filled potholes in the rain. It was for Oak Street. That one ton went to Oak Street.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, I'll call a question, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
New purchase order 1197 to Portland North Truck Center. And it's for an exhaust leak and an air leak on the international. 27134.
Purchase order number 1197 to Portland North Trucking for an exhaust, exhaust working here for $271 and 34 cents.
Any discussion?
This is a new problem or an existing problem already?
So it went in because the exhaust broke behind the turbo. They fixed that, and then there was another exhaust leak, actually, under the cab.
Okay. I'll call the question, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Does the board have anything to me tonight?
Yes. I think, certainly I would, and I think the board would probably like to have a report on and talk about that, too, on the, on the roads, on Pike's work and status and.
Okay. Under drainage was put in last week, tied into two structures. We went 60 feet up South Street, and we did 330 feet on Foundry Street. Foundry Street is probably 2 to 3 gallons a minute continuously running into a structure. And going down South Street is probably a couple gallons a minute running into a structure. Tomorrow, a company's coming in to lower all the frames and grates on Foundry Street. Pinch Hill Road, they started to put culverts in, ditch, and the Y intersection has now become a T intersection. They started grading that all out today, actually. Tomorrow, they're planning on putting the other two culverts in, finishing up whatever little bitching, little bit of ditching is on Pinch Hill Road. And then they're gonna move over to Foundry Street, ditch the hill, erosion stone it. And then next Monday, they're gonna start reclaiming Foundry Street.
Okay, that's excellent.
So Foundry Street will be shot down.
Tell the board as a board what, what ensued with the, the idea of using a smoke bomb to try to trace the.
So back 10 years ago, when I did this for an everyday job, that's what we did when we needed to find out where water was coming from. But I guess newer technology, they don't use smoke bombs anymore, since I guess there's been a few lawsuits out there. So now what they use is a gel, what they call a gel pad. And you literally have to get permission from a resident to go into their house, drop it into where they think, you know, into their sump, and see where the dye's coming out.
So you do it in reverse, you do it with the foam motors?
Yeah. So we never did anything. We ended up, that one pipe that was, we were worried about, we actually ran the drainage pipe right beside it. So the whatever water is coming from that goes right into the drainage pipe and into the structure.
Oh, I thought it was just going into the, into the, just the gravel. It's going into our structure? So it's going into the stormwater system? So it's going to the Salmon Falls River?
Yep, it's part of the groundwater.
Okay, that's not what I heard originally.
What did you hear originally?
I just heard that the, the, you know, all of the, it was just gonna be left with all of the drainage there, you know, with all of the, in the gravel.
Whatever, whatever water pumps up through the road, the underdrain is gonna catch it, and it's running into the structure. So the.
But it's not directly.
No.
All right, it's not piped directly into the structure.
Well, the underdrain is piped into our structure, but it's reaching up through the ground and whatever else, so. The homeowner, the homeowner of that house did come down and look, and he sways up and down. It was an old drain. He said it's been plugged off for two years. He actually invited the water department into his house, which somebody failed to tell me. With all the conversation that's been going on, and the water department was very well aware of it, they failed to inform me that they were invited in, and that if we wanted to go check, we could go check. It's been plugged off. So whatever pipe, little bit of water that pipe's catching, it's.
So we think it has been plugged off at the, at the home water scene?
He invited this in, so.
Any other questions about?
Did you call Phil Blandre and Nova?
I did.
And what did he say?
He said that they smoked testing and they needed two weeks' notice. So smoke testing, from what I understand, smoke goes up into somebody's house, where it's a dyed smoke, it does damage to people's houses, and it's turned around into lawsuits. So that's why they stopped doing it.
That's not what I was told.
But that's okay, whatever.
The municipal association told us. And that email, what they got?
I, I, yeah, I, I was also advocating, you know, I had talked to Bill Blandre about him coming to do the smoke test. And so we were gearing up to do it, and then, then I heard that it's, it's not advisable anymore. So I don't know where this came from. I guess it came through the municipal association.
Caroline actually called the municipal association.
Right.
That means kind of the job is still does it.
They may, they may, they may smoke their sewer system. I know that you still smoke your sewer to see if you have leaks, but smoking your sewer system to your, somebody's house is two different things. So.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I felt, I felt that this was our chance to do it, but, you know, you have to, you have to have to follow the advice that you're being given by professionals, so. All right, so do you know, once they start? So are they done in Pitch Hill, or you're, you're still just doing some of the prep work?
So tomorrow, like I said, there's a company S U R, they're out of mass, and all they do is set structures, or frames and grades. They're gonna lower all of our frames and grades. They're gonna plate them, fill them back over with gravel. They're gonna reclaim the road. Once the road's reclaimed and we get grade, that same company's gonna come back and raise all of our, our frames and grades to paving. Whatever it is, three inch, four inches above. So when the pavement goes over, and they're level, we've got two culverts on Pinch Hill Road to put in tomorrow, and a little bit of drainage left ditching to do on, on Pinch Hill. And then, like I said, Foundry Street will probably be the day after, and we'll probably start ditching Foundry Street, the hill, and putting riprap or erosion stone, destabilization fabric, all that.
And do you know when he might? Do you know when they might be finished?
I don't. So I'm taking.
Have they scheduled the transfer station?
They have not, as of yet. I'm actually trying to work with them right now to get a message board.
At some point, Board, I wonder if you, if you think this is a good idea, but I wonder if we might have Chris, although it, you know, he could come back at any time, doesn't have to be this time, really, take a look at what we are anticipating for roads for next year, just to kind of give us a, a feedback on the job cost. Just to see.
I don't, I don't think it would hurt to, to talk with somebody to.
Do you know what's scheduled? Do you want me to send it to you?
You can send it to me.
I will copy the board as well, so.
Absolutely.
This is what's, I mean, not, it could change. This is what's, I mean, it could change, we haven't reviewed the plan, but this is what's currently in the road plan. For next year, whatever it is, it's either, I think it's either some part of Woods Run or some part of Heritage. Yeah, we have a transfer station, do you wanna talk about transfer station, do you wanna talk about this, do you wanna...
Yeah, Mike and I, go ahead Mike, if you wanna present it.
We met with Wayne Howl this morning to be the Highway Department Assistant. He's very nice, he's worked for the National Department of Transportation as a part of the road crew, ended plowing. And owned his own trucking company for a number of years. Very professional, put people up together. He has experience with small engine repairs, so I would think that he would be a good fit.
Is the board ready to appoint him? Do we have an expected hourly rate? Did you talk about an hourly rate?
We did.
Is that here?
He was the starting, uh...
Yeah, whatever the hours it's at.
Fourteen thirty-five was the starting, isn't it, at the highway?
Is that what, okay, so, I don't know where it is, but I'm just gonna write it here.
Is there a specific amount of hours he wants to work, any days that he's, like, is he, how, what's his availability?
Sixteen to twenty-four hours a week is what he's gonna work, that's what my budget kind of allows.
Is there, like, is he, are you gonna be able to use him anytime you want?
He said he was available Monday through Friday, and if there were emergencies on the weekends, he could assist.
That's good.
So weekly, says weekly starting salary's six sixty, so is that...
That's at a southern, at a previous player.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I just say, just sugar my health. Alright, so, so I'll entertain a motion then to hire Mr. Howe as a Highway Department Assistant at fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents. For roughly, I'm sorry, the range was...
Sixteen to twenty-four hours.
Sixteen to twenty-four hours a week. Okay, I had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would probably amend it pending the background.
Yeah.
We discussed that with him that.
Okay, so let's, we, so, alright, so, Jody, would you like to amend your motion to include pending background check and other such checks?
Sure. Mention to amend, amendment to provisional of a criminal background check.
Excellent, okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so very good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hand this to someone. And, transfer station. Attendants. Do we, so, I, I don't know that the board has ever officially talked about the fact that we may not have a full complement?
Yeah, I sent out an email to you guys.
We should talk, yeah, I know, but we should, we didn't talk about it in, in a...
We, we have not, no. So we had an employee, um...
And that's why I thought we had, but why...
Do we need to go into non-public for this or no?
I think we talked about it once before, non-public actual, yeah, we should. And then you, when you go back into public session, you can discuss, I mean, ask the other, someone put a picture in.
Well, are we just accepting, we can just accept someone's resignation? That's not, we're not, I mean, are you proposing that we accept?
Yeah, they, they...
Mr. Blandre's resignation?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on this? I think by consensus, we, we will just say yes. And then open up the question about what next?
As soon as I get his resignation, I actually put a ad in the Indeed. And I don't believe we've had any responses yet for that position. But it's the day he resigned is the day I put an ad in.
Is it on the website, our website?
I don't know if Caroline posted it or not, to be honest with you. I know we usually go through the...
Ask her to do that, sometimes, you know, it's local people, they don't have to drive far, you know? It could hit them at a time of their life when it seems to fit.
Absolutely. Although, I will have Caroline do that tomorrow.
Um, anything else? Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night, Jeff.
Have a good night.
Do you maintain a blend view, intersection blend view and climate?
No, I don't. One time I plowed it. That pothole.
Cause I'm on the climate, on the climate side of the intersection, it's a huge pothole right there.
Someone's worth still that, I will let them know first thing tomorrow.
Thanks, Jeff.
Have a good day.
Let me start with purchase orders. The first one. City Dover, Vehicle Repairs, the Cruze seventy-two, replace the heat slash blend door motor. It died on the vehicle, I guess, a couple weeks ago, so the troops brought it over there. So it's purchase order number one-one-nine-three for a hundred and ninety-nine dollars and nine cents. Now come out of Vehicle Repairs. Order number seven oh seven.
Purchase order number one-one-nine-three to the City of Dover for repairs, the Cruze seventy-two, replace the heat blend door motor for a hundred and ninety-nine dollars and nine cents.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Officer Stevens is in dire need of duty boot replacement. So I purchased order number one-one-nine-four, made out to Red Shoe Barn, for one pair of duty boots for Officer Stevens. In the amount of a hundred and twenty dollars, now come out of line I've known two fifty-seven, I do have longs ago.
Boot took accept. Accept purchase order one-one-nine-four to Red Shoe Barn, for one pair of duty boots for a hundred and twenty dollars.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Staples is having a sale on paper, buy two, get one free, expires Wednesday. So I'd like to get four cases, purchase four cases of paper and receive six. So I purchased order number one-one-nine-five, made out to Staples for a hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents. For four cases of paper, account number five oh five, supplies account.
Yeah, you could've used a credit card. Could've used a credit card for that.
I haven't brushed it yet, but, I mean, I still can. Or we can get the rewards. On Staples cards still.
Well, we get rewards for the town clerk cards, yep. Cash, I mean, it's just cash.
Right, it's the best way.
Yes.
Purchase order number one-one-nine-five, Staples for six cases of paper for a hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Excellent.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll hit Caroline, I'll flip her then.
In the future, would Officer Stevens or any of the officers be able to go to rent and get shoes with the card too?
Uh, well, I, I suggest that you, well, because we have an account with them, they actually give us a discount, we pay within a certain amount of time. So if you, if you buy that day, you may not get the account right, the discount right away, so...
The town card is really attached to an individual.
Yep.
So it would be to you, it's to Caroline, it's to Kevin Heard, so, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, certainly if they're willing to bill us and without any additional expense occurred upon us, then...
Yeah, it's a good deal.
There's no sense in charging anyway.
How did your coffee go?
It's this Saturday.
It's this Saturday?
It's Saturday.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't missed it yet, alright.
Uh, yes, coffee with you, we're this, this Saturday at ten. You're more than welcome to join us.
Thank you.
And also we have the, the police, Spes needs billing committee meeting Thursday at six-thirty.
Excellent.
So...
Well, I wish you a good meeting, Michael will be there too.
And that's all that I have for you folks, anything for me?
Was it a good, was it a good open studios weekend? There was no...
Uh, no trouble. I drove through a couple times and the, the traffic didn't seem to be as busy as it had been in the past. And I think like a Saturday was a lousy day.
Saturday was awful.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Great day for ducks.
Really. Did anybody get to try the chocolate?
Yep.
Yeah. Was it good?
Yeah. Always good. And we got a winner in the duck race, they've been zooming down the river, I'll tell you, it took all of four minutes.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
Steve Burton, right here, right? Up here?
Yes.
Bob, why don't, why don't I call you on... Your Wednesday, when are you on duty on Wednesday, or are you on duty on Wednesday?
I am.
In the morning?
I'll be here eight till four anyway.
Okay, we don't stop, maybe we can just, maybe we just talk about the first night's meeting, what we wanna accomplish or...
Alright, we have a lot of things board to look at, review. Most of these things circulated, have been available to us to read, so, but if you want, excellent. So I'll just give you a copy if you wanna look at it, and we have to sign all four, we're ready to do it.
Can you buy today?
So, no, this is the, this is the loan agreement from the Municipal Bond Bank. It reads similarly to, sort of, the loan resignation from the USDA, actually with maybe fewer restrictions with regard to some of the compliance issues. And the, the loan is in the amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in total, which would encompass the fire engine and the transfer station. And you can see, the, those are all things about what we have to pay, we can't make money off this, there's no arbitrage. We have to be good doobies. You can see on the, on page eight is the repayment of the principal, this is not, it's not have the, the interest yet. It's just the principal. And so the transfer station amount is, is across ten years. And you can see, like in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, it goes down to just being the remainder of the fire engine, so just that twenty thousand a year. And the, I think somewhere it has the max interest at, I think it lists either three point five or three point seven five. And we won't know for sure until the bonds actually get sold. So they, they say, what we, what I heard from the bond bank is that they put in a rate that they're very comfortable cannot be exceeded. I just don't know, I can't remember where I saw it. Alright, maximum interest cost rates is D under number one. Maximum cost rate shall mean an interest cost rate three point seven five percent per annum. So, I suspect, once the bond is sold, whatever the rate is, that we will get the schedule that includes both the principal and the interest, so that we can then use that for our long-term term claim. Any other, is the board ready to, to move that we accept the, or, accept the loan agreement? And have me sign it?
Does Kate need to be here?
No, I, I, yeah, I asked, I asked, do we need a big signing party? And the Municipal Bond Bank said no, we could sign it, and then tomorrow or the next day, the treasurer can sign it and Kate can sign it. So, yeah, I did ask. So that is, that's the answer. So it will require the town clerk's signature and the town seal, and it will require the town treasurer's signature. And they've both been asked to come in, well, Kate will be here tomorrow, Beverly was, we've asked her to come in. But we have, I think, till the end of the week to get this back to them, so... So, are we ready to move? Do you wanna talk about it? Do you want some time, please, you should take the time to, you wanna read it again or...
You sent this over.
I did, yep. We've had it for a bit.
Move that we, we accept the loan agreement, the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank to sell bonds to raise the amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna sign four, no, I'm gonna sign all four, they're all the originals. Just one, I'll give it to you.
We're not outside yet, just you?
No, just me. Just, just, just to put some...
I'm cold.
Just, just to get the paper up by hand. Because I cannot be trusted.
I think four copies said the same.
Yes, they're exactly the same.
Do you know that loan agreement in the minutes?
It's big, I mean, I don't have that...
I don't know, or do you have a link to it, or are you publicizing it or not?
We're going to be, we're going to be scanning it and, you know, putting it on the draw. I mean, one of the things that we can do is, once we get all of these things assembled, is just open up a folder that has all of these things in it. You know, that are available for the website. But it, I mean, it's not a bad thing to include with the minutes, I mean, I'm happy to send you a copy.
Okay, do that.
Yep. I'll send you a copy of all the things that we're doing, rather than write them all down, I'll just make a blended statement. Cause there's gonna be a pile of stuff, we've just scratched the surface. Alright. I'm pulling out the drug-free workplace policies and procedures that we've looked at a couple of times. We had Chief look at this and he said to make it generic about the, the reporting. So I did, got rid of the notification piece that we had, and so... Okay, and it's gonna have all three signatures, so we can just, if we're ready to sign, I will just pass this to all of us. It says it's, we've adopted it on May eighth, effective immediately. Yeah, I see it, just there.
Drug-free, is it?
Mm-hmm. So we have to email this to all our employees now?
Yep. As well as the next one?
Yes.
Conflicted interest. I haven't got the beginning of it. That's all. Is Caroline still here? Yeah, just the top two pages. Oh, maybe, maybe. Thank you. There we go. All right, whoo. Here's our conflict of interest policy. Again, we've looked at this a couple of times. The changes that we made since the last time is that it is, it covers all appointed officials and elected officials of municipal government and all employees. So, and rather than having a, sort of an annual reporting, we will just give them the policy, make them responsible to let us know when there's a conflict of interest. And they will have to acknowledge it, sort of like what we did for the personnel policy. So we'll have, uh, once we sign this, if the board signs it, we can ask Caroline to sort of coordinate the dissemination, make sure that the boards and committees and whatnot all are provided with this and sign up.
Historical, zoning, planning.
Yeah, yep.
Water.
Not, not, storm water, storm water, not water district, storm water, yep, all of us.
Yep.
Yep, so it'll take a while, but, you know, we'll get it, start to get it disseminated. So, given that, are there any other questions on this? Again, this will have all of our signatures, if we're ready to sign. And it, this says effective June first, so we'll have time to, to disseminate to people. All right, I will sign it. Thank you for finding me. All right, let's see what the next thing is. The next thing I have is the legal services agreement. So, we use Attorney Roberts as our town council. And the board asked for years, but the USDA wanted us to get an agreement between the two, a retainer, in other words. And so we asked them to provide a retainer with their fees. So that's what this is. Uh, I again sent it out, but if you would like to look at it, please, you saw it. Jody, do you have any need to review this?
Yes.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to, uh, accept the retainer fee agreement between the board and Hopeful Phoenix Formley and Roberts, special association. So move, is there a second? Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll sign it, we'll have Steve sign it, and then we'll send it along its merry way to USDA.
Any help to Caroline at this one?
Uh, yes, have, um, have Steve, we need to send it back to Steve Roberts, scan and send to Steve Roberts, so he can sign it. All right, this is, uh, another document from the municipal bond bank. The undersigned governmental unit, that would be us, hereby request the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank to purchase the following described obligations of the applicant. This application shall not constitute a contract or a commitment to enter into a contract. I hereby certify that the following information is true and correct to the best of my knowledge and belief. And what it's stating is that the legal governmental unit is the town of Rawnsford in Stratford County. It has our mailing address, six sixty-seven Main Street. It says that this particular piece of paper was prepared by me, that I'm the select board chair. So I'm not sure what it does above and beyond what the other one does.
We already signed the agreement.
We already signed the agreement, so. There, you can, you can take a look at it, let's see. I feel we've already signed that, but. Oh, thank you. I have, I have one in, in the regal, with the pretty green tree.
Hands, take a hand or one of them.
I, I printed it.
It says that the undersigned governmental unit hereby requests the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank purchase the following described obligations of the applicant. This isn't, this isn't the contract, you've already signed the contract, but this is just the.
Authorizes.
Authorizes and gives, and outlines the.
Yeah, the contact information, so if you want to take a look at it too, just so you can feel confident.
You already signed your contract, all the contract.
Yes, yeah, our contract. We'll move, okay, any, any, okay, I will, by consensus. Well, actually, I have a movement, I have a second, there is money associated with this, although not directly, but just to be above board. All right, I will call the question, all those who, in favor of my signing the municipal bond bank piece of paper that certifies that we are the town of Rawnsford, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you find the loan agreement in that pile and put this like on top of it, please? Thank you. And there's one more piece that I just want to tell you about, but it's for the town clerk. So the town clerk will take a look at this, and assuming that she agrees with what we said here, we'll sign this and seal it, and we'll put that together with, with that.
Yes, we'll send it to them.
Yes, we'll send it to the, the bond bank. Actually, that, and that little piece gets returned to the bond council, I believe, along with this town clerk, yeah. Yeah, so we'll have to get everything to its proper folks. All right, we did hear back from the Kennedys Savings Bank, I forwarded along to the board today. So this is the interim financing arrangement that we have made with Kennedys. Did you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Do you want rate?
Do you want?
Short term?
Short term, one and a half percent, one, no, one, one and a quarter. All right, then I will entertain a motion to accept the, this, uh, do you want to see it?
No, I was just, I'm not sure if it.
Oh, okay, very good.
Uh, motion to accept, uh, short-term financing, Kennedys Savings Bank for a loan amount up to three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars at an interest rate of one point two five percent.
A second. Any questions or comments? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just signed that. Three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, say it again.
Three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's because the USDA loan agreement came in at that amount. Although since then, the feds, when it got bumped up to this USDA big boys, big kids, they, they rounded it to three hundred and eighty thousand, but we're, we won't muddy the waters with Kennedys, we'll be fine with this. But that's how come it's, it's a little less. All right, so there's that. The last such item that I, for us to talk about is the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool. So we got, actually, they got sent to Caroline, I think, sometimes last week, but they sort of got lost, so we got a fresh copy. So, so there's, there are three account applications, so one for the fire engine, one for the culvert, one for the transfer station, thank you. So it's set up, of course, they fill these in, and these are not the final ones because they said no, is when, is this account being set up for bond proceeds? They check no, and the answer is, yeah, yes, it is. So, so I, I'm getting back to them, but, but they have it set up so that I'm the person who signs that, it. And it, I would like to talk to Beverly about this, because she, as a former treasurer, I don't know if you have an opinion, but it seems to me she, we should, ought to at least have two signatures, right? And certainly hers has to be one of them, if there's only one, it's probably hers, maybe. But we should at least have, I'm going to try to get both.
I think you wouldn't want to err on the side of the cock, and but I also would say that they may feel this won't drop the municipality all the time, right, so.
Are you thinking?
I, I think you should check with Beverly.
Yeah, I should, I just feel like, yeah, I mean, as, as town treasurer, then, so, uh, what I would like, so, we either ask her to sign them as the only signature, or I will also sign them, unless the board has some objection. It's just, it's, there's no money, it just, it's the paperwork, we've already talked about setting these up. So if the board's okay, I'll review with P. Dip and with Beverly to see who should be the appropriate signatures. So that sets up the individual accounts. Then there's a permissions, uh, and an addendum to permissions, which sets up as contacts Beverly and the entire board, giving us all the ability to view and initiate transactions, open and close accounts, change banking instructions and account information, assign permissions to and establish other contacts. Everybody has that. In addition, I seem to have, be the person who receives the statements electronically. I don't want to be the only person to receive statements.
They don't have this individual power, they don't have this power resolution.
Well, this is, this is what I want to talk to them about, so, so, we, we won't hand this in until we have this sorted out. And I won't hand this in till I get back to the board on this, okay? I'm just sort of getting us up to speed with what we've been asked to review. This just sort of came my way, so you can look at that. One thing I think you can fill out, though, is the contact record. No matter what your permissions are, uh, they want to contact information. And I will tell you what, how I'm going to manage my own. Is there, for on, for an online username, they're asking you right here for your security question on a piece of paper. I'm not going to fill that out.
No, I wouldn't.
Because this piece may go missing by a lot of people. So that, that's what I'm doing, I'll fill out the rest of the, or sign it, it may already, already be filled out. Here's yours, Jody. Here's yours, and I, and this is mine, and there's one for Beverly here as well. Yeah, I think it just needs our signatures, because they're not going to fill out the online user.
None of mine is filled in.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, mine is filled in.
None of mine is filled in.
Oh, okay, so right here, if you want to, where's the?
Right here.
Yes. Yeah, they must have gotten it. You looking at the security questions?
Yeah.
And this is for their, uh, deposit investment pool?
Yes. It's, it's contact information. So right now, we are talking about having the individual board members and our town treasurer set up as people who can access.
Yeah.
Or have certain permissions, sort of like the bank with citizens. We, we're on, each, one of us is on that bank card, so each one of us can sign at least, you know, one part of the check, and the treasurer signs the other parts. All right, so we'll just put this here, and I'll find out more information about how these things, who push, who should, who normally gets permissions, and see what Beverly, what Beverly's comfortable with. All right, well, thank you, I think we, uh, I think we did all of those important documents that were on our agenda. All right, here's another important one, water ban. So I sent out to the board the Thursday update from DES, and all of Stratford County, except for a teeny bit at the bottom, is completely out of the drought.
Yeah.
So.
Saying in light of the information from the Department of Environmental Services, we lift the water ban.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will let people know. Uh, MS four permit, that's here, because we're in the process of filling out the report. I sent a draft along to the board and to other people to look at, I'm hoping that we get feedback this week, so next week Caroline can have the actual report on the appropriate forms filled out. And you saw the, the, uh, the minutes that I found.
Did we ever get assessed that fine back there?
I don't think we could assess that fine, it must, I, I, you know what, I didn't read the follow-up minutes, I, I was looking for something else, and I chanced upon it, and I cut it out, I, I'd saved it, and I'd forgotten all about it, I just happened to see it today, right before I sent out the list. And what we're talking about is that, uh, the town, I got, I got a letter from DES in twenty eleven, I think, saying that we had not filled out our MS four annual report for like two years, and we were about to be assessed a three thousand dollar fine, but it could go up to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand if they didn't hear from us, so. So anyway, we're in the process of filling out our twenty sixteen report. Uh, Town Hall, Roddingwood, and member, uh, Roddingwood. So Caroline, uh, here's what I know, you may know more. Caroline had heard from Howard, Howard was gonna, Howard and Tom, Howard Hammond and Tom Clark, our building inspector, I'm sorry, dropped names, were going to do an inspection and report to us which things were, we should take care of sooner than later, and which items we should plan for the CIP.
Perfect.
Okay? That's all I know, does it, do you, do you know anything else? Have any other updates?
Not, not on that, they're, we're still waiting for this deal to be done, but they're still waiting for a window of good weather.
Dry weather.
Because they need the, to rent the lift.
Yeah.
For the lift to be here for a couple of days.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, we don't want to pay.
As soon as I know you.
Because I think the contract, the contract has us footing the bill, if he has.
Yep.
He has to keep it, so. Yeah, that's great, thank you. Not ready to discuss review of legal priorities. Dog waste downtown, any updates on?
Just got to call Dr. Mike and see when he'll be able to board this time.
You know, I had a thought, um, always dangerous. What do we think about checking in with the 4H to see if they sort of want to take this on as a project? Either, you know, to, you know, sort of dredge up some interest and why it's important to keep the town, you know, dog waste free, maybe get some receptacles and volunteer to keep them empty. Something like that, I, I, I know that one time Tia, who, I don't know if she's still involved with the 4H, she said they, they look for projects, so.
Sure.
This is a good community project. I mean, no, there's no guarantees, but, and it probably won't happen till I'm back, but, um, from vacation, but I'd be happy to check with her.
Is there a link to the 4H? I know, I think she tried starting one.
Pardon?
I know they tried starting a 4H in her town.
I think they have, there's one, they do the baskets, they help with the baskets. They do the baskets, they help with the baskets for Christmas and Thanksgiving, I think, with the police.
I asked them to do a flower bit, but wanted to return.
Oh, that's nice.
And how do you get involved in this? 'Cause there's nothing on our website about it.
Oh, you mean there's no link? Oh, that's interesting.
No, with the rest of them.
Oh.
I only know about it 'cause of the people that tried to start it years ago.
Well, that's a good, would be a good thing to put, wouldn't it? I will pass that along.
You wanna handle it?
It's a very closed group. I've tried to get my son into it too. And contact through the library. I was told I needed to, the lib, it's held at the library, but you have to contact the organizers and they try to keep it very small.
Oh, and I don't want their help.
And so there, two or three times we've approached them. We've always heard that they're busy or the meetings have gotten canceled and they've been informed of new meetings.
Okay.
Maybe county 4H too, I don't know. I don't hardly, I don't know if they're involved in 4H, I don't know.
Okay.
But there is, Tia, who runs it in county, is part of a larger or a different group, so she might be a good contact for other 4H programs too.
Okay. Projects, easements, I think we've got, we did receive, or we were about to receive, the fifth easement and so we can sign the offer letter that's in there. It should be an offer letter.
You don't need a motion, right?
Uh, are we all signing it? Yes, we're all signing it, so I'll just announce what it is. So this is to William St. Laurent. He's, he owns, he's a property owner of a vacant lot on Hein Street and he had one of the larger easements, square footage wise, and so our offer was $500, which he accepted. And we will all sign this. He hasn't signed it himself, but we'll sign it first. And I've asked Caroline to try to contact the Morgan Ellies, who are the sixth easements, sixth easement holders. Okay? Our bid package for the culverts is under review by the USDA. There's some conversation back and forth between Hoyle Tanner and the USDA engineer, but I think they're close to giving it the okay. They would prefer to have all of our easements in place, so we'll try to get, we'll try to get them. And also legal has to review them for USDA. So, so we'll get them as soon as we can. Town Hall drainage, the, we received the bonds from Gang in Construction and he did come in to sign the notice of award. Those documents have been forwarded along to legal and they are writing the contract for us on that. Transfer station, I don't know anymore about that. We asked, did we ask him about, yeah, he, yeah. So that's one remaining piece. Okay. Copying and scanning, having a table if you would like? Or if you liked it not?
Just a quick, there is something in the folder from the company that the police uses, but what is our budget for that this year from, for the upstairs? I have a copy line item for $3,000, but that's printing the town reports.
Yes, and other incidental, yes, and other incidental copying fees.
So you have an office repairs one and an office equipment one, but you'd have to combine those two to make the yearly payment for what they're offering right now.
Would it work if we did? And does it completely extend it?
It would be $1,300 for the year.
The remainder of the year?
Oh, good point. It would be less than that. It's $120, $112 a month. But I wanna talk to them because they do service the police and we talked about leasing and not purchasing and this is about purchasing.
Can I just look at that? You have it right there. Just have a look at the budget in just a minute.
Sorry, I got a lot of junk.
All right, so notice we had no expenditures for office equipment repairs for last year and these are for copy fees. So we probably have at least a thousand dollars to work with.
Right. But I wanna make sure that it's gonna be wireless printing from Caroline, 'cause there's certain things that they wanted. So I wanna make sure that we're not just purchasing something they don't.
Yeah. So, yeah, absolutely. So we'll give you time to look at that. And we can, a couple of things. We can always wait till next year, right, if we can't find it. There could be, you know, once you figure out dollars, we could also find some dollar support in the IT line and there's some, you know, there's an argument there for, for using some of those dollars. So, so. All right, we will table on it till you do a little more research. Letter regarding trees, trees, the Chinburg property. I don't know that Tom Clark has written that yet. So I think we're still waiting for that. New Hope Housing Tax Exemption. We haven't received back from the assessors yet, I think the exemptions and the credits and those things, so, so we need to continue to ask them and remind them. The rec committee, I, I'll ask you in general if there are any questions, but I did wanna, when you sent out the information on the rink, it looks like Tia has officially said that she won't be able to manage the rink, so I thought it'd be nice for the board to send her a thank you for having reinstated the ice skating rink and managing it for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay, then I will take care of that. And so now I'll just say, go ahead. General comments about the rec committee and other things?
We're meeting tomorrow, and tomorrow at seven, right here. And we are in the process of getting our director. They're cleaning out the shed. They are still, now it's the last minute push for training and staffing and because of all the snow days, it's gonna be really tight fit. 'Cause they're going till Thursday. So they have technically Friday. Does that happen?
As we get closer to the bid package going out, I think, oh, at this point, I'll probably be back before we actually make a decision on the contractor 'cause the bid package isn't even out yet. But if not, there, there will be a pre-construction meeting, you know, so, so we'll be inviting like probably Dick Fortier from the school. So, so it may behoove someone from, like maybe the, if we have the director then, to come to that meeting just to, to see, meet the contractors and find out about the scheduling and other things that might have an impact.
Okay, yeah.
So just try to, you know, if we forget.
Yeah, we had, we had talked about that and that if they were going, like when we were interviewing, that you're gonna have this going on in this corner, this going on in this corner, so that is on the radar. No, but yes, thank you for reminding me.
Historical committee, non-lapsing account?
Yeah, table that part, but the, the survey committee had a table this weekend at Gila Studios. If you mentioned that you stopped by.
Somehow we have a magnet, so Judy bought a value.
Judy bought a magnet, then, okay.
Two weeks ago.
Somewhere.
So we raised $65 and magnet sale and donations, so.
Excellent, very good.
And thank you, Celia, for, for staffing that table this weekend.
Very good. Policies and procedures, the welfare is just there 'cause we're in the process of, you know, kind of reviewing them, but we're not ready to, I got it just yet. And we're, believe it or not, we're at town administration standing items, so.
Police space meeting is Thursday night here in this room at six thirty, I think. Seven, maybe, I'll check. It'll be a long time. Six thirty.
Okay. And Jody's already mentioned about the rec committee and I don't have any, Garden Club, that's. I don't have any.
Your duck race went well this weekend?
Yeah, surprisingly. Sounds like it was a great day for ducks. We had sold quite a bit before and people continued to stop by, so, yes, thank you. It was quite good. We were raising in particular money for a lawnmower, 'cause the lawnmower has hit its skid, so I think we, we will be purchasing one and storing it at the, at the gardens. Okay. If that's it for activities for this week, we're into building permits.
I think it has a significant occupancy.
649 Main Street?
Is that next door?
I don't know, is that next door?
I don't know. The end unit seems to be occupied, I still.
Here?
Yeah. I don't know if that's what that address is for, but.
It does say, unit, single dwelling unit.
Oh, so maybe not, oh.
I don't know. All right, so it's been assigned by Tom Clark, so I will sign it. I'm gonna pass it on to you, Sam, so you can take from it what you would like.
Yes, lots of, lots of subjects have been put in this time here. For 136 Goodwin Road, Sam, for the record.
136 Goodwin.
I don't wanna wait for you to come in. So the first building permit we have is 2017-039-427 Stockdale Circle. They're re-changling the garage roof and it has been checked by Mr. Clark. They've given us a check that's insufficient, but we will approve it and they will have to come and pay the rest of it, I guess. The fee is $45. Next is 2017-040-428 Washington Street. They are repairing their roof. Addition, which on the side of the house, it looks like it's a small, single story section or so. It's for $45 though, is the fee, so. Next one is 2017-43. This is 11 Cricket Lane. Paving.
Cricket Lane. So it's so. Somewhere near Kristen's house. Across the street.
So they are repairing the driveway and they are fixing some siding. Yeah, Mr. Clark has reviewed it, $165 fee for what they've done. They're fixing some windows too, I guess. And the last one we have is from 2017-04, I think that's a one or a four. I don't think.
It's probably a one.
I don't know.
You looking at the number?
I guess it's 041, I guess.
041 is what I.
The tail of the four in front of it crosses over, so anyways. It's 130 Roberts Road. They're putting on a new asphalt roof and doing some trim work. And the fee is $205 and also has been reviewed by Mr. Clark. And we have a purchase order on here. burial plots. First one is purchase order number 1273 for stamps. For the tax bills, auto renewals and for general use for $490.
That was a motion?
It was.
Oh, sorry, second.
Any discussions? Okay, it took me a while to catch on to. All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Calls in favor say aye. Aye.
And then we have our first deed of burial lot. It is for two graves. Last name is, what's that, for Althea Dagon, D-A-G-O-N. The amount is $350. And the next is for one burial plot for Frank and Colette Malurba. A Colette, Colette, Malurba's.
Yeah.
And the last thing we have, oh, $150, sorry. It's worth discounting by more than one, 'cause $150 for that one, how much was the other?
$250.
I figured that was $250.
Okay.
The first one is the $350 for total.
For two? This one's $150 for one?
It's probably cremated.
One is in the cremation area.
Ah, there you go. One cremation lot, then. And this is a letter from, that's great, to dear property owner, pursuant to main Department of Environmental Protection regulations, please file enclosed a notice of intent to file transfer application, pertaining to permits for ownership and operation of the South Borough Hydro Station in your neighborhood. You were being sent this notice because town records indicate that you own land, a budding land currently owned by the Salmon Falls Hydro LLC. Thank you for your assistance. So, this is the company that owns the dam, the other dam. Well, we own property on one side of the river. They, they're changing the name. Let's go and see it. That's it.
And we did everything in the folder tonight already. Everything left in here is stuff that we are already keeping. As long as vacation.
So we were efficient, yeah.
They were, so. Nothing that we don't discuss already, can't, have already been discussed? Okay, that is it. That's it comes back tonight. What is this?
Uh, that's more stuff that was signed, isn't it? Let me see what this does.
To not make it into the whole.
Oh, this is the, this is the Slager Road. So this is for Car- Oh, this is the, this is the Slager Road. So, this is for, this is for Caroline to send out today.
Oh, that's the other large one, right.
And this is the, oh, this is our resolution. So, I'll, I'll come in tomorrow and sit with Caroline and, you know, make sure we scan all of these things and blah, 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 and set up a meeting with Beverly to talk about the P-DIP.
I left notes on everything, so...
Thank you.
So, it says you're going to talk to so-and-so, she's going to talk to you.
Yay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alright, community comments?
Nancy?
There's, there's more work being done on Rollins Road. 41 Rollins Road has had someone there for like three days off and on. I don't know what they're doing. I can hear saws running and what have you. And Bill Irving, 77 Rollins Road, he's doing some digging and it looks like pavers or something in the back.
So, we've got an email on that. He did go check about.
Okay.
He saw paving at 37 and there was supposed to be a purchase order in there. It's a 90 cent.
Per, permit?
Thank you, yes.
It's okay, here, have a, have a...
Have a go.
There wasn't one, though.
There wasn't one.
It could, you know, it could be with Tom.
Yes.
He could have brought it in after Tom, so...
Too old, we just sent him an email?
Yeah.
That would be good.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, just a quick note. We brought in $65 in magnet sales and then got, for the historical committee, and got an additional $10 or $12 in regular donations. And we did sell at the PTO event the week prior. So, that's where your magnet at home came from, the PTO event. So, with all of the sales, so to this point, we have earned as a committee roughly $50.
Over with the cost of the magnets.
Yeah, so...
Well, it's a start.
Yeah.
It's a start. Good. Alright, thank you. Alright, board, are we ready to call, please?
I just have one other question. When you did, when you were talking about the drug testing, do we do random drug testing?
We weren't talking about drug testing. It's a drug-free workplace.
Oh, okay.
So, what, so what it entails is letting our, our employees know that they're, we expect to provide a drug-free workplace for anybody. If they spot any issues associated with drugs, alcohol, they'd report them directly to their supervisor. They can be disciplined up to, including termination. So, but there's no drug testing. You know, this could be part of a process if something happened, but there's no random testing.
Okay.
Okay?
Just curious.
Yep. They'll be, the policies are on the website, so at some point, you know, when this gets all signed and scanned and blah, blah, probably at this point, when we're back from vacation, you'll be able to, the residents will be able, the public will be able to look at all of the actual policies there.
One quick question. The town has a website. Is the library part of the town website or do they have their own website?
There's a link, they manage their own, but there is a link to it from our website, as far as I know.
So, you can find out what's going on at the library through the town website too?
Yeah, one to the other, yes. Alright, board, are we ready to go?
I'll show you.
Alright, good, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Mike, are you going that way? Oh, I haven't moved that way before.
And this is an extra. We didn't sign this one, so I, you know, I'll just put, sorry.
Oh, you got it, no worries. You guys will walk up?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
They won't let everybody come, they don't allow everybody involved. It's very difficult to coordinate with them.